I'm going to flag for the update tonight. What do you got?
Huh?
I might be an update. I got a flag early.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Good to go. Excellent. Thank you, Patrick. I'm going to call to order. We're moving back into regular session. Hastings and Hudson Board of Education for May 29th, '24. We're going to start off with a public hearing on the district code of conduct. It's going to follow the same rules as normal public comment. Say your name and address in three minutes, please. So whoever is ready to roll. Hi, how are you?
Hi, Alex. Before I introduce myself, I just wanted a point of clarification around the three minutes.
Sure.
Because it's my understanding that the policy 1230 only applies to the public meetings that happen, not general hearings, just like when we had a meeting about the capital reserve funds, those weren't confined to three minutes.
That might be the case.
I think that's true.
Okay.
I just want to point to board. Okay. Just because I have some things to say. I don't know if it'll be cut off in two, three minutes.
Not many people here, so.
All right. Thank you. So yes, my name is Nenisha Nunez. I'm a resident of Hastings. Tonight, I'm speaking on my behalf, but as well.
A former Board of Ed member?
Yeah. You know, Hastings graduate, Board of Ed member, teacher at Hillside, all the things. So I'm speaking on behalf of myself, on behalf of Eva Olavarian Nunez, and as well as Lisa Edgar Livin, who also served on the board, was even our board president. And just a little bit more background on us. Lisa served on the education subcommittee for the New York State Bar Association Task Force on Race, Social Justice and Equity. I was also a consultant for that task force, and I currently serve as a K to 12 equity leader for the Artsley School District. We've been coming before you all today to talk about some of the proposals that we found somewhat problematic, given our background, relentless efforts of championing equity for our district, which a lot of times we're the front runners of, and I'm really proud about our district. I wanted to start with just page one of your proposal. Specifically removes protected hairstyles historically associated with race. On page two, there's another definition of race that is going to remove again protected hairstyles. And also problematically, a proposed change removes the words "including gender identity and expression" from the definition of gender. It's our belief that even if other. Changed. We understand that other protections exist. This is the work we do, right? We understand that there's the Crown Act in New York State, that there's the Dignity Act, maybe other provisions within the code that could be helpful and perhaps give the protection. But unfortunately, because we were only given four days' notice for this hearing, we weren't able to thoroughly do a type of review that we would want to do with a fine tube comb. So perhaps you can assume that there's no harm in this change by the removal of definitions that we've mentioned above, but here's what we have a problem with. We both, like I said, we've both been advocating for equity even before we started on the board, and removing that language, even if it should be redundant, could send a really just loud and painful message that we are scaling back our efforts of inclusivity and justice. And actually, even from a legal standpoint, that could be used in legal arguments as such. And I just simply couldn't see that happen and not talk about it, especially thinking about some of our most vulnerable and marginalized communities. So one question that we had was, what are the reasons for these changes? You've asked us to review this, but haven't really let us know why we're making these changes. Frankly, we don't really see an upside to these changes. We just see huge potential downsides, like I said, especially to Black and LGBTQ plus community members. As I mentioned before, getting notice of this four days ago during a holiday weekend just doesn't give time for like truly meaningful community input, and I know that this board has talked about valuing that. Even when scrolling through the website today before coming here, I noticed that about a month ago, the district clerk posted on our website legal notice of hearing, but it took several clicks to get into. And if that was an error or for whatever reason, it's not on our homepage, and it's not listed on our upcoming events. In other words, someone has to really go through a lot of work to even figure out that this important meeting is happening. We also didn't notice any of this mentioned in Dr. Mercur's or the district weekly mailings, which always include important dates. And finally, we just wanted to make notice that typically. Practice, the code of conduct is. And so we were wondering why. To happen before the installation of new board members, especially when there's going to be a major change of the board's composition, having those elected trustees or electees being able to attend the meetings and participate in discussions. So we're hopeful that you also will include these actions about changing this important document. And as always, thank you for your time and all the work that you put in around our district.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other public that would like to comment? No? All right.
I would just like to say something about the timing.
Sure.
I don't think that's actually accurate. I think that's been, I don't want to say a moving target, but I think for better or for worse, or for what it's worth, I think the review of the code of conduct has historically come, depending when it was convenient, to put into the agenda often at the end of the year, and then it would get pushed ahead because there was too much other stuff going on at the end of the year. However, but I do recall being sure that new potential board members or elected board members would be invited to be there to hear about it. But I don't think that was a maliciously done thing this part.
But I mean, these are very good points. I think it's only public comments, so only engage. I think it's the only most useful for everybody. So actually going, and I can send you the record, back since the early fall, we've been noticing this is the meeting for review. It's, and actually it was in some of my Friday letters, and I can get you that information so you see it. If there were several clicks required in the late go, we apologize, but it was also, it's been posted at least eight or nine times, mentioned, referred to, been built into the agenda all the way back to early August. So we'll share that with you. My professional style and personal is never to hide or duck. And so just we'll verify that, and hopefully that'll be assuring and helpful, because it looks like nine different times going back to August, we were flagging this timing. Second reason is I so deeply value the code of conduct. I don't know the history in Hastings of when, when the school year is already underway, operating without an approved code of conduct. So two years in, I said, how can we run a district without a code of conduct we can point to, and especially the sort of behavioral issues that affected us most dramatically in middle school, which I think we're beginning to come out the other side of, but it's never perfect. We did not have an operative conduct. And conceivably, given it's a policy and requires multiple months of review, this timeline we're on could have pushed us into mid-year without an operational code of conduct. I was advised by those with longer history here that it had been a spring review before, but it somehow ended up in the fall. I would equate it to a board voting on a budget. You have to vote on a budget now as the board for the future. You have to sign contracts, approve those, for the future. Some of you won't be on that board, but your responsibility right now is to make decisions for the immediate and the coming years. So I would put the code of conduct in that category. And most importantly, because it's a point very well taken, I became quite nervous, as a number of people here would understand and the policy committee understand, to say, we're operating without a code of conduct. We do not have an approved one. So as families raise frustrations, concerns, we actually don't have an accepted document by the board to point to. So the aim was to, with a board that has to make those same kinds of advanced decisions on budgets, contracts, hiring, et cetera, that you could do the same for the code of conduct. It would take it just as seriously whether it would be that exact board overseeing it. So I think legally, it's a very consistent place. The language changes were done under very close scrutiny of legal advice, very close scrutiny of the policy committee over multiple months. This is a very helpful interpretation, and we can go back and look, because the intent was actually to strengthen protections. The document as existed said multiple things in multiple different places. It was actually vague. And when push came to shove, could actually be a problem for the protected classes, as we began to look at it more closely from both legal advice and the members of the policy committee. You could comment if you want.
Yeah.
About that. So I think it's a good point. We'll go back and look again with attorneys. But the intent was actually not to undermine, but to strengthen. And so I think those were, again, very good points. I think those were the main ones. You know, people are going to have different points of view. I respect that. But again, it was very helpful to have the presentation here and the early notice that you would share, which was very, very helpful.
Thank you. Yeah. I, sorry, Dr. Machesi, I didn't. Thank you, and it's always good for such lengths to come out so that we all are doing this together. So I'm part of the policy committee, and we rigorously, sorry, rigorously worked on it. And like Dr. Machesi said, the aim was to strengthen. Because as we, as you and I know, and we've served in other committees, there is only one human race. And so we are working with the aftermath of the atrocities of creating whites, yellow, and black race, and all the craziness that is associated with it, that we are cleaning the mess now. And so limiting race, which at this point, we just have one human race, to all these adjectives, when we have a lot of mixed race individuals that are having different anatomical features, was taking away the importance of the aftermath. If you look at the protected classes, there's a difference between race and color, right? Race has its own category, so does color, ethnicity, on and on and on. So the idea was to strengthen it. I am in agreement. I'm not, let me wear this correctly. I understand that no one has that knowledge about race sitting on the back burner of things, because most of the time, people will look at people's hair and blah, 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 and give a perception of who they are, what they are races. So if it's not repeated throughout the document, some kind of description about race, then it wouldn't, it can't be, the marginalized state is not being recognized, right? It's just race, and then you move on. But I think that, I mean, that is something that we can look into, to see how we can keep repeating it. But I think that during the discussion, we had some input that said, keep repeating the descriptions throughout the document. And then there was also the understanding that we should just have a description so that it doesn't become just, you keep repeating the same thing throughout the document. So as it stands right now, I wouldn't mind it being repeated throughout the document with the appropriate description that actually is descriptive of what race really is for marginalized groups who are impacted by race, the aftermath of race craziness. So thank you for the input, is what I would say. But this was not with an idea to undermine the importance of marginalized people that face this unparalleled way of being treated. So thank you.
I do want to add just one quick thing, which is that having sat at the policy committee meeting where there was a lot of, well, many meetings actually, where there was a lot of discussion about this, I believe that the intention was to ensure that this was a very strong document that people would go to and use. And what was done is that some of those things that were removed through the red line process were actually built in under definitions, so that it's very, very clear that when we're talking about distinct physical, race refers to a person's distinct physical attributes, including skin color, facial features, hair textures, that that was there and present, and the intention was to make sure that it was memorialized in a definition form, so that the copy would then not be onerous to work through, just from a reader's standpoint, so that it would be an active working document. If I'm remembering correctly.
Yeah.
All right.
I proposed as well. It's defined, on my count, 15 times, that, you know, kind of definition in parentheses. So we said, for flow, and any legal document kind of puts it up front, defines it, and then everyone who references, that's the definition. So you don't have to worry about a word missing, or, and one of them, the perceived race actually kind of implied that the traits associated included protective hairstyle. We had a lot about that. It's like race is more than just hairstyle. You could read it wrong, just to limit it to hairstyle. So we defined it clearly up front. That was the intent. And then we took out the parentheticals in 15 spots to really kind of condense the document and make it crystal clear what the definition was, and then talk about it going forward. So that was the intent behind it.
And the definition of race was from uninformed place, the way the government has it, wasn't just us cooking it up. No, I'm very happy. You know, it's always good for clarity, and that's the essence of all the transparency that we want to provide to the public. So thank you.
We've gone a little out of norm, but I think it's important for transparency to do that. And if we'd had multiple people here, I think we couldn't do that.
Yes.
But we had a moment before in another meeting where we went out of norm, and I think it's actually occasionally useful. So, but we can follow up in writing to the submitted email, replying all, listing in great detail, all the posting moments, which you'll see go back to August. You know, the, a little harder to clarify the rationale in writing about the language shift, but it was intent to strengthen, not weaken. We believe clarity strengthens. We want to reduce doubt, reduce ambiguity. And then I feel very good actually about the timing, because now if the board adopts this with maybe some adjustments based on public comment on the 11th, that's when you vote. We go into the summer, go into the school year with an adopted code of conduct, and we know, we have our basis. Now, that can always be updated, but it has to go through that two-month review process. So, but we will follow up in writing to the whole board on the points here, and then certainly to the comment.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you all for providing that background. Appreciate it. Again, we're not voting on that till the 11th, so two weeks away. Thank you. Moving on to district announcements. Any one to pull out of here, or?
I think the written word speaks well.
Okay. We're winding down here. Then the main presentation of the evening, we're going to welcome Rena and Leonard from PBDW Architects. This is a space utilization of the Farragut complex that us on the facilities committee saw a couple of weeks ago. Is it, it's posted, it is posted, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, welcome. And do you want to preface it at all?
Just briefly, I think certainly Alex and Sylvia, you're members of the facility committee. I may be missing a member, but.
Jody.
Thanks, Jody. You there too. Sorry, I didn't look to my right. Sorry. But the three of you are there, had this, and now the full board will hear. Would like to do is let, get through the, get through the presentation, then open up for questions. There may be questions about other critical capital work. Maureen, in particular, I would just speak to that afterwards, such as boilers, such as athletic fields, boilers at Hillside. That's not in here. This is gigantic, massive, and necessary. It doesn't pick up those pieces. But I think it'd be important, if you have questions about those afterward through this, we can, we'll be ready to speak a little bit to that. Is that fair structuring?
Yes.
Yeah.
And again, Jody, I'll now look to my right permanently, so I don't.
Leonard, welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Is the mic on?
Yes.
Okay. Greetings, everyone. My name's Leonard Leong. I'm a partner at PBDW Architects. And with me is my colleague Rena Mandy. The two of us and our firm. We're excited to share our current findings with the board as part of the master planning study for the Farragut complex. The study will determine, will help determine the physical constraints and opportunities facing the district with a shelf life of 10 to 15 years. The master planning study will be an essential tool for managing the district's physical properties, for identifying priorities, for implementation, and for understanding the scope and magnitude of a district-wide program of capital improvements. We understand that the Farragut complex has previously undertaken a number of smaller projects over the years, consisting of maintenance-required works and renovation work as a result of annual reorganization strategies. This master plan exercise will address flexibility concerns, disparate department locations, and the need to accommodate additional class sections with special education programming within the existing complex. We aim to understand the Farragut complex holistically and resolve the building's organizational bottlenecks, evaluate additional space needs, and ultimately create more efficiencies in spatialization, and enhance the user's experience for years to come. We began this study back in February and have now completed the first of, first two of four phases. And the four phases are, and we'll reiterate this as the presentation unfolds, but they are site documentation, programming. After this phase, we'll be moving into concept design and consensus. So to be a little bit more detailed about each phase, phase one, site documentation, we reviewed the existing conditions of the entire Farragut complex, documented the existing building plans, and identified current uses. In phase two, the programming phase, we reviewed the existing program uses, conducted an extensive series of interviews with the Hastings community, from administrators, the faculty, the students, and also staff, to assess its current needs and identify deficiencies for future planning. We'll spend the next 30, 40 minutes sharing our findings for these two phases of work, where we'll review the following. Our program analysis findings, that'll be the first thing we'll touch on. Architectural highlights and deficiencies for various classroom wings within the complex. Existing use distribution of spaces for both the middle and high school. Existing classroom sizes and the number of students they can adequately accommodate, and we'll drill into what adequately, how that's defined. And we'll conclude with our recommendations ranging from high priority needs to future planning and recommendations for the next phase of work, which is the concept design proposal. And with that, Rena will take us through some of the detail.
Okay. Hi. I'm Rena Mandy, associate at PBDW and also a Hastings. So I know the building from being here, but, you know, more intimately over the last few months, really going through this programming exercise. I know you have a lot on the agenda, so I'm going to try to compress this to more like 20 minutes, and then we can go into any further detail if someone wants to go back to any particular part of the presentation. So we put together first site documentation, which was really putting together a model, a 3D model in our software, and documenting this complex, the middle school and high school. And in doing that, also identifying the programmatic area of space in the building. So defining, you know, what's used for athletics, what's used for art, and really helping to visualize that on a building-wide basis per floor, so that we can help to identify what adjacencies are, what ill-formed adjacencies there are, and really look at space efficiency and space inefficiency. I will note that throughout this study, we're really looking at programmatic space, so usable space, not, you know, not gross square footage of the building, but really programmatic use of the building. And so we documented for each floor the different uses. This is the first floor of the building that we're on right now with the Blue Lecture Room. And you can see, even just from looking at the plans, where there are, where there's certain cohesion in program, just from looking at the different colors, and where there are areas where it's less cohesive. You can see the first floor of the high school wing has quite a few programmatic areas, departments going on, on that floor. Whoops. Just to go back. Seems to have skipped. The main floor of the building, it's important to note that the cafeteria is at the top level of the Washington wing, and that the building is organized around this courtyard, which there's not a ton of interaction with, even though it is really readily accessible and available in terms of space organization. But in terms of capitalizing on that interaction with this beautiful green space, that's something that we, you know, in looking at the building, that we noticed is not well-used, and something that is really important in terms of organization of the full connection between the middle school and high school. Moving to the top floor, which is really the library space and then the high school wings, you know, pretty well cohesive space. And so that was really the first, and then obviously the very top of the building with the middle school auditorium. So that's, the first phase was really just going through that documentation process. And then the meat of what we've done is really in the programming phase, which. faculty heads, both from the middle school, with the board, or select board members, with the Joe's team and operations and facilities management, with student groups. And so we really tried to engage everyone in this process. I think the most positive feedback that we heard from, especially a lot of the faculty who have been here for a really long time, is this was one of the first times that they had been asked any of these questions about the building. And some people have been here for, you know, 20-plus years. And so that also kind of reaffirmed the urgency or importance of doing this kind of study. But to go into a really kind of overarching themes that emerged from those conversations, the overall appearance of the Farragut building is dated and doesn't align with Hastings' modern approach to pedagogy. Wayfinding in the building is confusing and creates bottlenecks. Farragut Middle School is extremely tight on space occupying less than 30% of the building program floor area for 50% of the building users. I think that was one of our biggest findings. Classroom spaces are packed with students prohibiting group work, flexible and collaborative learning environments. Classrooms are designed to accommodate sometimes 20 students and sometimes up to 28 are in there, depending on size, varies. More and more project-based learning is happening without space to accommodate the project-based learning. Flexibility of layout is important throughout the day and across grade levels, and more flexible spaces are needed for various types of activities, including conference rooms, department meetings, student group study areas, individual student and teacher meeting spaces, and quiet testing areas. Informal spaces are needed as additional work areas for student study and collaboration, and for after-class meetings with teachers, as well as general student gathering space. There's too little hangout space that students often eat lunch on the floors and hallways, which poses safety concerns. There are structural impediments to achieving the goals of Portrait of a Hastings learner based on this, with the existing organization of spaces, without that flexible learning and meeting and workspace. More transparency between spaces is desired. Much of the exciting work that the students are conducting is behind hidden, solid walls. This results in limited interdisciplinary collaboration and spaces that feel confined. This results in limited interdisciplinary collaboration and spaces that feel confined. Classrooms are in need of modernization, more outlets, that was repeated quite a lot, well-designed smart boards, or I should say accessible outlets, evenly accessible outlets as well, well-designed smart boards, equitable access to electricity, and learning continues to develop with technology. And that the high school wing has inefficiencies on some of the lower floors needing reorganization and intentional placement of program considering necessary adjacencies. So that's opportunity to gain space back on those high school lower floors. And one thing to note as well is the administrative offices in the central core of the building is really at the connection point between the middle school and the high school building, a heavily trafficked corridor up to the cafeteria, and could be rethought in terms of what that connection space could be. I'm gonna spend less time on these individual floor plan analysis, although this was really the meat of what we did, because we really looked floor by floor, classroom by classroom, and have talked to people about the efficiencies and inefficiencies at every level. But just for the sake of time, I'm not, the facilities committee has heard all of this. You know, the first floor level just as the main entrance for the middle school, but really is at a basement level, and that there's no accessible access from inside the building to this floor. The second floor level of the Farragut wing is the middle school main offices and conference rooms that are really too small and lose the ability to properly use as conference The Farragut wing third floor, which houses the fifth grade, does not have science area for a fifth grade, even though there is, there are science testing requirements now. So, there's a science cabinet in the hallway with equipment for science, and that there are not enough lockers to accommodate the fifth grade as well on this level. You can also see that special education is sprinkled throughout this floor and on the Washington wing as well. Sorry, there's a bit of a delay. The Washington wing has very narrow corridors. The lowest floor of the Washington wing also has smaller classroom sizes, and these are serving the biggest kids in the middle school. So, the kids with the physically biggest bodies are sitting in the smaller classrooms. The width of the corridor on the second floor of the, let's just wait for it to switch, sorry. Now, let's go back. Apologies. There we go. So, on the second floor of the Washington wing, the corridor width is reduced further because of lockers protruding into the corridor at the space. And so, it really becomes this hectic, busy intersection that's really kind of impassable The third floor, as we mentioned before, of the Washington wing is the cafeteria space on the highest level of a wing with the smallest corridors. So, access into the cafeteria is very chaotic. The cafeteria itself also, you know, because of the space for the kitchen area, timing to serve specifically middle school students is very limited, and so students sometimes end up eating in their classes afterwards because they don't have enough time after they've waited on lines to be able to sit and eat. Going into the central wing of the building, so between the two middle school wings and the high school wing, which is the area of the building that we're in now, the lowest level with the Farragut gym, which if you can see in that photo, is in much need of an upgrade in terms of finishes, you know, ceiling tiles in there are missing, and is really, really heavily used, although it's extremely small. The first floor of this area with the Blue Lecture Room, which really is the only flex space for the school, although right now it's currently being used for chorus because there is no chorus space. And because it's the only flex space for the school, is really the highest in demand. So, everyone wants this space, everyone wants this room. And it's also not so efficient in terms of flexibility with built-in tiered seating. So, to really improve the flexibility of your most flexible space is something that The second floor of the center wing, which is really the high school main entrance and lobby space, and you can see, let's see if this works, yes, there's some dead space really behind the trophy case as you enter the building, which could really be capitalized on sometimes just with better furniture, better serving furniture, or as more of flexible meeting space that is more actively programmed and well-designed. So, there's a lot of space inefficiency within that lobby area as well. Otherwise, there's a nice cohesive art wing, I'm just waiting for it to change, sorry, and the guidance suite, and you can see the administrative offices as well at that central connection place. We skipped a floor. No, there we go. So, the top floor of the center wing, just below the middle school auditorium is the library, and the science wing really kind of the most, one of the most cohesive spaces in the building. And the middle school auditorium as well above there. Going into the high school wing. The ground level really as primarily your athletic space, all of the screen. There are health classrooms down here as well, and a TV studio, which really is lacking adjacency to anything that it would interact with. So, not next to any sort of publication, art, and it's really kind of siloed. Sorry, we'll note just on that floor, there are also inefficiencies within some of the athletic locker room spaces, and a huge inequity between the men's locker room and the women's locker room. Moving on to this level, the first floor level of the high school, again, you can see just the varied program in this space, on this level, so just by the different colors, language, math, special education, technology. One of the biggest points that we noted and noticed as well in people reflecting back to us is how hidden Project Lead the Way is, that this is really your maker space area, this is really your, you know, technology space, your exciting, exciting work to be going on here, and it's hidden even off of this corridor, which is probably the least-used corridor in the high school, off of a secondary corridor off of that at the back of the building, receiving also quite a lot of sunlight, which is not necessary for a technology space. The main floor of the high school is quite a cohesive program with social studies. The high school wings, the two floors of the high school wings have a similar layout with the locker alcoves, which lockers in the high school are really not used. Lockers in the middle school are used very heavily, but lockers in the high school are not well-used and take up some real estate that could be programmed differently, could be some flex seating, could really serve the student population in a different way. And this central office space or breakout space is really kind of this leftover hidden space that is programmed based on whoever kind of needs the space the most. You can see on this floor, the art office is here because there's no other space for them, but they are completely separated from their art division. So, it's not always the most cohesive way to program. And on the upper floor of the high school, math and English, that central space on this floor is a math literacy space. You can see a picture of the math literacy room up here, not the most fun place to really be getting math literacy work done.
Like prison for math.
Yeah. So getting
It looks like an interrogation or
CSI of the highway.
After going through the analysis of each of the areas within the building, we were able to really pull some numbers to be able to try to analyze that data in a way that's meaningful for the school. And that's where we found that middle school is thirty percent of the usable space, while it's serving half of your students. Right now, there are five-twelve in the middle school, and I think five-twenty-something in the high school. So, it's really missing that extra flexibility in space, and this is felt by the teachers and the students constantly. So, that was a really important metric for us to really see after having analyzed the data. The high school meanwhile has, uses about fifty percent of the space for fifty percent of the students, and the rest is shared space. The shared space includes the cafeteria, the library, some of the athletic spaces, facilities areas, the administrative spaces, music, and that Project Lead the Way. We also looked at which departments in each building have the most real estate. But we also wanted to make sure that you're using your building efficiently, and so that's what we looked at in this chart, about what are the learning space, the spaces dedicated to specific learning spaces versus the administrative spaces. And the learning spaces alone, so not even considering the student common areas, such as the library space, the learning spaces, the classroom spaces, and spaces dedicated solely to specific learning is about seventy-three percent, and that's a very, very efficient use of the building, especially once you count in this additional student common space, and counseling as well. So that brings it up into the eighty percent of space use. You know, additional to that is bathrooms, mechanical space, all of your kind of support, building support spaces. We also looked at classroom size, and targeting about twenty-five students per class, right? If we want to ideally be able to accommodate twenty-five students in a given classroom, how many classrooms really fit that bill? How many classrooms are at that size where we can do that comfortably? And we used thirty square feet per student to be able to set that target or that parameter. Just gonna go to the slide. You know, you can go down to a really packed classroom, but you lose a lot of flexibility and storage space to be able, when you're setting a low bar. There's, you know, efficiencies in the way that most of the classrooms are used now, with about a twenty-eight per square foot student ratio. But if we're looking along with Portrait of a Hastings learner, and collaborative classroom space, and group work, and project-based learning, you really need to go up to the higher square foot per student numbers to get that flexibility of space and group work. So, we set a number in between, you know, in between these layouts, which really give you some level of flexibility, so thirty square foot per student. And only four of twenty-eight classrooms in the middle school really met that requirement. Sorry, in the high school, in the high school really met that requirement. Another way to look at this is if you look at how many classrooms meet a seven-seventy square foot minimum, which is the minimum if you're to build a new classroom to be able to get building aid on. And that was also a surprisingly low number. So, only science and art in the high school met that requirement. In the middle school, if you look at trying to achieve that twenty-five number in each classroom based on thirty square foot per class, if we exclude fifth grade, which fifth grade has some nicely sized classrooms, it's also about four classrooms out of your core twenty-six classrooms that meet that. So, we're really tight in terms of the size of our classrooms to be able to meet a target or a goal of twenty-five kids per classroom. And only seven of twenty-eight classrooms meet the seven-seventy. So, we have a programming report that's about, whoops, sorry, a programming report that's about three times the size. But just to really summarize that in a bit of a conclusion, the classroom sizes have not changed in the building in decades, although the number of teachers and specialists in the classroom have grown. The ideal classrooms would accommodate tables in lieu of desks as well, which take up more space to allow flexibility in furniture and more group work. And outlets are a huge issue, and equitable access to them. In terms of program development, what we heard was STEM spaces are really lacking in the school and not elevated. Project-based learning happens in little leftover space that teachers are able to In the corridors, wayfinding is not clear or bold enough to provide ease of movement between different wings of the building. The middle school corridors, particularly in the Washington wing, are very tight. Additionally, there's not enough lockers in the middle school to accommodate the student population. Meanwhile, the high school corridors are informally used as hangout space, and the lockers are not used. In terms of student spaces, breakout space is one of the biggest concerns across all disciplines. The high school lobby has large area, great light, right off of the courtyard, not capitalized on well, and the current furniture design is not ideal for the layout. The cafeteria is too crowded for the middle school. Student bathrooms are needed close to the cafeteria without compromising the faculty The library is one of the only spaces in the building that has flexible work area that's readily accessible and available to students. It's used at all times of the day. In terms of faculty spaces, the high school departments have dedicated office space, and the middle school does not, even though the middle school does double the amount of collaboration. They're doing collaboration both departmental-wise and grade-level-wise. The conference rooms are substandard, and the Blue Lecture Room is the most desired space in the school, although being currently used as a course room, so there's a need for a course room. Special subjects, art for the middle school and high school could be combined for a central art suite. Right now, art is really isolated on the bottom floor of the middle school. The high school auditorium front of house space was recently refurbished, but the back of house and stage area could be reconstructed better for accessibility and safety. And the music suite renovation was well-received, although we do need a chorus space. Special education, the special education needs for the building really vary on the type of special education program. Overall, there are space needs for testing, for private meetings, for cohesive faculty offices, especially for the middle school. And lockable storage. The special ed program is for math assistance was tested, piloted this year in the middle school and has really taken off. And next year, there will be six classes needing breakout spaces without physical space to really accommodate those. It's one of your most immediate needs. There are also space needs for therapeutic support program and for daily living skills. Although with daily living skills, there was some reassurance with new administration in the consortium as well. And accessibility as well to the building. The elevators are not centralized, and accessibility to the lowest floor of the Farragut Wing is not available from inside the building. Counseling is also another program that could benefit from a central location serving both the middle school and high school. It was interesting to hear from some of the middle school students, their experience of going, you know, down to the lowest level of their building to go to counseling versus somewhere right off of the high school lobby and right readily accessible for the high school. And it just had, they had very different relationships to what counseling meant and how counseling could be accessible to them because of just the physical space in the building that each of those were located in. For phys ed and the gyms, they are heavily used throughout the day, after school, evenings. I mean, I think they're used by every community group as well. And as we said before, the locker rooms could be reconstructed to be more equitable between girls and boys and gender neutral and to be more efficient in space on that lowest level of the building. For operations and facilities, they really noted to us the attention needed to the floors and lightings and ceiling upgrades that you can visually see in some places walking through the building. And that storage in the building is a challenge. There are a lot of strange storage closets that have locking mechanisms that are frustrating. But, and you know, there's always a need for more storage. A lot of the conference rooms have storage cabinets in them because there's a lack of that space, that dedicated space. We didn't touch on this much, but access to the loading dock is through the play yard. It is very well managed by Buildings and Operations, but not ideal for a play yard. And so, and really reimagining what that could be, you know, that came up as a point of something that has been here for a long time since, you know, really the conception of this building, but is used very differently, in many different ways, all the time. And from a security perspective, the multiple exits throughout the building is very problematic. And this goes along with wayfinding as well, just being able to know where you're supposed to safely exit or where you're supposed to exit that is not just an emergency exit is not always easily understandable and visible. And so that's difficult for security to manage. The most problematic of the spaces is really the school street gym entrance, Cochran Gym entrance and exit. So someone going out, you know, opens up the possibility for someone to be able to come in, not through a main entrance space. So going into needs, this is our last slide. So going into needs for the middle school, really that need of that 20% more space for your 50% of your student population, so about four to six classrooms, breakout rooms, faculty offices, special education spaces, and to resolve the circulation and locker needs for the middle school. We haven't put a pen to paper in terms of design. As Leonard noted, that's part of the next step of concept design. But we have thought about the ways to do that are really either to relocate 5th grade, which is another option that we're not really planning to study, relocating the cafeteria to be able to gain back the third floor of the Washington wing, or building in addition, I would say, or and building in addition to the Farragut and Washington wing, or Washington wing. For the high school, to create breakout spaces and hangout spaces that are programmed in spaces for students and faculty, and to update the classrooms with outlets, whiteboards, smartboards, views into the corridor. Shared spaces, using the center wing as really a central maker space, art suite area, guidance suite area. Those are really the things that serve both of your student populations and should be at central points in the building. Updating the blue lecture room to create more flexibility in the space and creating private rooms for testing and sensitive Zoom calls and meetings. And the addition of a chorus room. We outlined additional needs to renovate the athletics locker rooms, to upgrade the stage backstage area, to identify storage appropriate within the building, wayfinding, and thinking about a new middle school entry potentially. Addressing the multiple exit points as well. Establishing a cohesive color scheme throughout the school and addressing the need for student bathrooms next to the cafeteria without compromising the faculty bathrooms. So those were really the list of the high priority and additional needs, if we want to kind of sum it down to a few bullet points. But there's a lot of meat in there. I won't go into kind of the different basis of design for concept levels. I think that's something we're looking to work through with the Facilities Committee. We are looking at what we can do within the existing space allocation. But I think it's become clear, especially because of that 20% more space, that a building addition would be needed in order to accommodate that need as well if we did want to meet that need. And I think I'll leave it there.
Thank you. So we want to open up to questions.
I have three questions. So the first one, I wanted to start from the blue lecture room, which we are in. I was just trying to figure out, so just to have a concept of all these wonderful improvements that you are suggesting. Looking at this right now, what were you envisioning? So that at least we can feel it, you know.
So I'm going to preface that by saying, reiterating again, we haven't put pen to paper on what we are designing.
Okay.
So that's, this is really kind of the analysis portion that we've completed.
Okay.
And we're very clear to kind of present the analysis portion before jumping into any re-envisioning.
Got it.
I mean, I think knowing that we need to be more flexible with the most flexible space, right? Getting rid of some tiered seating and just some basic improvements to the room in terms of aesthetics, usability, floor, you know, and potentially even more accessibility to your courtyard off of your main space. So I think those are kind of things that we would be thinking about, but yes.
Before you go to Damaris's other two questions, and I've heard this before, but for me, it's helpful, and you've sort of alluded to it, but I think since this is a presentation for everyone and people who are watching, I was really taken by all of, how would I call it? By the listening tour that you did to get to this point. And I mean, even starting from a meeting, it really wasn't that long ago, but in the small conference room upstairs. And I'm not going to ask you to walk through everything, but I think that people shouldn't get a feel for all that you did, people you spoke to, how you kind of came to this, because I think it's really important.
You know, within the master planning document that you have, there are meeting minutes from all of us.
Okay.
We actually have them here.
I think we sent them through as part of the appendix that is posted as well.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. I mean, I feel like I just wanted to highlight that and give you credit for how you came to all of this, because there was a lot of work, listening and questioning and
That was a series of seven or eight programming meetings that began in February.
Right.
And some of them were two hours long. I mean, it was really hearing from department heads, from students, from, we tried to really capture all groups so that we got different perspectives and understood how everyone uses the building. And so that's part of why we think this process is so powerful is because you really get also the buy-in to whatever result there is, because it came from what everyone has said and told us.
That's exactly why I think it's important that everybody knows. I mean, it's sort of a while ago for you all, and people know, but I think it's really incredibly, it's very foundational and significant if you want to get buy-in.
Yeah, I would just note that the appendix, it is posted, and there are 12 pages just for the minutes, so it is pretty exhaustive, so thank you for asking that.
I'm just thinking of people who might be listening.
No, no, for sure, but I would not have even thought that that would be there, so thank you for, thank you for pointing.
I'll say to that, Jody, as well, that I think that those meetings were some of the most appreciative time for the faculty and, you know, people who have been here to have that opportunity to give feedback about the spaces that they've been working in for so long.
Yeah, I just, I think, kind of touched on it, but lightly, I thought one thing that stuck out to me when we had the meeting was, for example, that New York State Next Gen Learning Standards and Science require a lab component, and that's, it's on a cart right now. There's no actual dedicated space. Like, that's a really big deal. You know, that's sort of the thing that really comes out in those meetings, because how would you know it otherwise? So, you know, it's a sign of quality, I think, that we suss those things out.
Sorry, Cole.
No problem. It's all good, but I had another question that Alex touched on, so I'll connect it now. So you, in terms of dedicated space versus flexibility, I mean, I'm sure Judy may know this because of killing with all the stuff that we Not said, not said. But I, I have been part of new innovations of building this, turning this, where sometimes dedicated rooms or buildings or spaces get underutilized, and then you run into the same problem, although that need is there. So kudos to the need that you've, I mean, you've listened and put together, which Judy's wanting the community to hear, that just really a rigorous process. And then, so I'm just figuring out, not, you don't need to answer now, but I'm just figuring out how you would balance rooms that you want it to be dedicated, at the same time have that chance, like, it's a design thing, which I know you are not going to answer now, but just the backburner of questions that I will personally ask, even though when I leave the board, I will not be here when it's happening. But it's how can that flexibility okay? Because I'm sure, the reason why I asked for the blue lecture room was that when this was built, there was a need to meet whatever was present at that time. And like you're saying right now, we need it to be more flexible than it is right now with this fixed stuff here. So if that can be factored into, especially the spaces that we are calling dedicated to create that flexibility, so that was just something I wanted to put out there. You had mentioned something about the multiple exits being problematic. I thought having multiple exits is great, so I just wanted to
It's not the getting out, it's getting in, it's a problem. Though, there are some students found a way out. Actually, in all seriousness, I says in the committee meeting, if I might, this is actually a safe and secure building.
Yeah.
That's a public record document, which in this day and age, they'd go, ah, come on. But I want to assure anybody listening who has, anybody in the building, staff, family, whatever, I say with a big smile, this is a safe and secure building. Thank you, Marina team. If a door opens now, it buzzes, you know, and we track that down. We can see on cameras every in and out, and we're figuring out where we have gaps. So my daughter's in a high school not far from me with a thousand doors, I'm not joking.
Oh, boy.
So if you think this is a worry. So we are, it's a great point, and we're in copy, and I just have to stress that.
Yes, I think, I think a lot of it has more to do with signage or wayfinding or being able to really guide people throughout the building to help manage really where the main traffic flows should be going in and out. Obviously, in case of an emergency, you want the exits and you want people to be readily accessible to exit, so yes.
Thank you. And then my final question had to do with the input about, this is really technical. So I know for counseling spaces, privacy is important, because sometimes even in the college, I'm higher ed, so that's, I'm using that as an example, where is situated so that people don't see how many times people walk in there? So maybe the students may just walk into the counseling center because it's a way to pick a candy or, you know, just to chat. Sometimes it's more than that. And so I know that they were talking about accessibility, but also privacy is something that is needed for it. So I just wanted to throw that out there, so that's up for me.
Yeah, I think even separate from counseling specifically, there are a lot of private conversations that happen, especially on Zoom now, that has skyrocketed in the last couple of years. And there are not a lot of spaces for those calls. So even for faculty who have to call a parent, or, you know, sometimes they're doing it in the faculty office, and it's a more private call. So having kind of dedicated little small booths that can be shared throughout everyone in the building is, you know, another way that we could accommodate that need, yep.
Thank you.
I'd just like to share, I found this fascinating. It's so interdisciplinary, and I thought the color coding was also super helpful. You don't even have to read to see that things are all over the place. And I really appreciated how, I mean, the first thing you said is super important. Out where we are pedagogically doesn't match architecturally where we are. And my daughter is in 6th grade, and she often says, it's so old and ugly, you know? And I'm sure you heard that.
I will say, I mean, you also do have a beautifully historic building.
Right, yes.
So there are
What kind of teenage girl?
But I think inside the spaces, right? The spaces that are, that are inside that are, the students and teachers are living in, we've lost some of the historic nature of them and also don't have the modernization feel in them. So, you know, we're also restoration architects at PBDW. We value old buildings, and that's part of just what we do. But you kind of have neither when you're in the programmatic space of the building.
I also just think you did a great job of thinking about what they, the students need according to their age in terms of needing hangout spaces, needing flex spaces where they can, you know, close the door, noting that the fitness room was super popular and that, and that's awesome for health reasons and, you know, and I really appreciate the report in terms of showing us where we could really lean in and, you know, sort of capitalize.
You know, I just want to say, to look at this entire complex holistically and for a longer period than, you know, the next cycle of renovation, targeted, look at these, you know, program elements to see, it's really, really important. It's kind of targeted, and the more granularly we can get, the better you can even make cost decisions, right? Like, okay, we know these hallways, as Nina has said, they don't really reflect the kind of modern or the current design, but what can we really do? And is that really valuable to everybody? So there's still going to be a lot of work here between kind of, I think, building communities' desires, and then for us to conceptualize kind of elements within the next phase for, you know, hallway that's more transparent. You know, we can kind of get into all those things. But it is really important, and I think this exhaustive approach is the only way you can spend your money wisely. You can't have any at all.
And I, I, I am in touch with many community members who no longer have children in the schools, who feel like we're just, you know, using, using so much money and need state-of-the-art facilities. And why does everything have to be so fancy? And, I mean, I hear this.
I do too.
And, and a, a report like this is really, you know, providing concrete evidence as to why we need to invest our money in this, in these buildings.
Yeah, and I think, you know, specifically, the big ticket item is, is the middle school, right?
Yes.
And that, that need for the middle school and programmatic space, regardless of what it may look like. I mean, obviously, whatever we invest in, we want to invest well in and have a desirable space and beautiful and wide access. But, you know, that's meaningful to the students, but programmatically as well, there's a very clear need.
And that's basic.
Yes.
I have a, oh, did you have a, go ahead. I just have a few questions. I have one question. I'm assuming that this, these buildings are like a mishmash, that it wasn't all built like this. So like, part of it was built, and then part of it was built, and then part of it was built. Is that how it worked?
Going, going back, you know, we have certain records there, but it was more cohesive, I think, than you would imagine.
I'm looking at the picture and thinking-
I think that space was just used very differently.
Yeah.
And, I mean, at one point, there was a second cafeteria for the middle school.
Yeah, on the first floor.
Right, on the first floor. So it, it also, the building has been programmed very differently in its origination than now.
Right. And I think that any parent or anybody who has or has had a sixth, seventh, or eighth grader and has gone to back-to-school night knows that wayfinding is horrible. And it's really like, and it's really like, yeah, we have to have guides, like, show us around. We're always like, what's what? I never knew the W stood for Washington. So that's, I was like, why is it the W wing? Now I know.
Right.
Right. I mean, that's a, that's clear to your point about-
Right. Totally. The kids might know that, but I didn't know that. So I have a, a couple of questions. I also wanted to make a comment that sometimes it's inside the classrooms and in, on the, in the hallways that look dated. You know, it's not just like the, what you can fit. Especially some of the high school classrooms, you go in, I'm like, what is this furniture from? Like, it's like, it's crazy and, and not usable. So, okay, so here's some of my questions. The lockers, I thought, was very interesting. I understand from my high schooler that nobody uses lockers, which seems crazy to me. Like, don't you put your bag in there? But I guess they carry them around. And what about your coats? That's so weird. You just like have them with you? Yeah, odd. Okay, but if that's the, that's the trend, then that's what they do.
Do you have them with you?
It's easier in high school just because we are running back and forth from class to class to just have our stuff with us rather than running to a locker that could be three floors down from where you need to be.
Ah, yeah. So maybe that's a question about how we organize the high school, not a question about the need of lockers.
But if it's also just for coats, then it's a different type of storage than lockers.
Right, exactly. Well, because, you know, when I was younger, we would change our books and our notebooks for each class. But now they just have everything on their Chromebook, so it doesn't really matter. But, but it's interesting to hear that, like, is that they don't need the lockers? Or is that the lockers are inconvenient? And so that's why they don't use them. So that kind of backwards thinking is really interesting to me. And then the only thing about the, the fewer students per classroom is an interesting idea, but then we need more teachers, which affects the budget even more.
We need more classrooms still.
Yeah, right. Is it, the fact of the building, like, I, I live in an old house in Hastings, and anytime we try to do something, they're always like, would never be built like this today. You know, it's like, not code. There aren't like, like, you're supposed to have outlets every 12 feet or whatever it is. Is that the case with most of these, like, this, the building itself? Is that a lot of it isn't?
I mean, the, the building is, is up to code, is up to code for what it needs to be in a lot of areas.
But, you know, I think the biggest instance of that is accessibility to that lower floor
of the Farragut wing.
Yeah.
Right? You know, accessibility from inside the building versus, so we're in compliance legally because you can get in there, right?
Yeah.
But, but just in terms of flow of people and, and program, people, you know, that also never used to be a space that students always used, right? How we've adapted different spaces and thinking about that more holistically, as Leonard was alluding to, it just lends to different ways to how, how you would bring something up to a, a code, or how, you know, how, how that intervention would work within the space.
Yeah. My con-
Oh, for instance, something simple, it's the lighting we have here.
Yeah.
You know, this really relies on artificial, like, coming down to work. But, you know, that uses a lot of energy and is a constant energy. So these were designed at a different time, so technology is different. And the outlets that I think we must talk about, the justice and the running.
Yeah.
But, you know, there's direct, indirect lighting where you can get task lighting or you can get uplighting simultaneously. You face them differently. So if it's really bright and sunny out, you don't even need any lights. So there, there are just new, there's just new technology.
Right.
That also helps your, you know, your bottom line, your energy consumption, and also the, the kind of indoor environmental quality.
Right, right.
How your students, how your teachers are, you know, because they spend a huge amount of time here.
Yeah.
Eight hours, I think.
Yeah.
Right, right.
So these are the things that, you know, we have to modernize, so people would, we would look at that as part of the concept, like, what are the, you know, what are the deficiencies in your classroom? And how do we upgrade that in an intelligent way to standardize it so that, right?
Yeah.
It doesn't become, this is red, that's green, you know, that has, so, but that's one of the things that, you know, one can look at.
Yeah.
Where the front of the classroom is, right?
Yeah.
Versus being able to have any wall being the front of the classroom. I mean, that's, that's something that's talked about a lot in terms of modernization of the classroom space and flexibility of work. And that helps how your teachers can teach in different ways and engage the students in different ways.
Right.
So things like that.
Got it. And then the other, just other question I wanted to ask is, what, this might be more for our admin, but what is the auditorium used for on a daily basis? Like, why couldn't that, like, why couldn't Chorus always practice in there? Is that just a dead space except for events?
No, it's used during the day by, they, they bring classes, like, it's, it's a, a space that can be used by either middle school or high school. I mean, the idea is that we are looking at the schedule next year to say, like, can Chorus be in there a few, like, you know, a few times a day? And then, like, as we're now understanding the use of the space.
Yeah. I just didn't know if those spaces were like dead spaces.
We're just to be a Chorus classroom that, during the day, that wouldn't really, you know, be the best use of space either, because that's a much larger space.
Right, right.
Wouldn't require that. So we are kind of looking at i- if, if in fact there are times in the day we think it's underutilized, using that to then, you know, make this space more available. But similarly, like, this is a flex space that teachers will bring students into, like, you know, because it accommodates a larger group, and that could also happen in those sort of terms.
Yeah. And then I just have one last question. How do you define, like, flexible work area? I don't know what that means. Does it mean, like, the walls move? Or does it mean, like, that it has, like, chairs and couches? What does that mean when you said that there's no flexible area?
It, it does mean different things for a different kind of program space, right? Some, for some spaces where you need a flexible space that can accommodate, you know, five people and 20 people, or 20 people and 40 people. It might be something like a flexible partition, right, a movable wall. But it's also flexibility in terms of different seating areas and different types of seating areas, or different types of desks, and different types of interaction between, you know, the, the sitting spaces, or the more collaborative spaces, the individual spaces, or the group work spaces. So it really, it kind of covers all of that.
Right, right. And maybe, it was interesting, the 30 and the 50 for the high school and the middle school, but, but the middle schoolers are, I liked your comment about they're smaller, you know, so they do need less space versus bigger kids. Although, once you get into eighth grade, then they start, you know, can be as the same as the high school. And then I just have a question for Kai, since you lived it, and you're currently living it. Like, what is your impression, like, when you see that presentation, when you hear about the space constraints, or, like, do you think that there's opportunities here?
Yeah. We trade, we share. Yeah, so I actually thought it was really interesting getting to hear all of these comments from an outside perspective, because these are things that I deal with on a daily basis and have been dealing with for the last 12 years. So one of the things that you continuously mentioned that I have seen so many times is just how crowded the hallways can get, because that is such a big issue, in my opinion, during middle school, especially in sixth grade, when we first started transitioning classes. It was, first of all, not only difficult to find our way around, but also just, you felt like a salmon moving upstream. It was so hard moving through the crowds of people. And middle schoolers have lots of energy, so it gets pretty intense. The high school similarly has some crowding issues. I think that people know where they're going and how to get there the fastest. So it's a little better in the high school, but it's still definitely a lot of overcrowding. I think, I mean, wayfinding is certainly difficult. I, I know I realized about two weeks ago that I was taking the longest possible route between my English and Spanish classes. So it's definitely, it's, we're all still working on finding our way around, and I'm a junior, so.
You can maximize that for what, the three weeks left you have left.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I know. You mentioned parent-teacher conferences. I have to FaceTime my mom to help guide her through the halls. So it's definitely tough to find your way around, especially if you're not really familiar with the layout of the building.
Yeah.
And lastly, on lockers, you said something that was really interesting about the backwards thinking and whether it was, are the lockers inconvenient, or do high schoolers just not use them? In my experience, it's a little bit of both, in that the lockers themselves are great for holding things. They're, you know, a great resource to have. They're just not used, because for me, my locker is on the second floor. Almost all of my classes are on the third or first floors. And so it doesn't make much sense for me to be running up two flights of stairs just to grab a notebook, so I keep it all in my backpack. But I also know that for, like you said, coats and stuff, winter boots, or if I have a presentation, it is really useful to be able to just shove stuff in there, so I'm not lugging around 18 bags, especially during Tech Week, that comes in handy too. So I think that the lockers are a great resource. They're just not used very much by any of the high schoolers, due in part to their location, but also just because it's so much easier to have everything with you.
Got it. Thanks, Kai.
Yeah, of course.
I did have, so just a question on kind of the efficiencies that you could have without further study, let's say, on like central admin. That seems like that could really be maker space, counseling, like you would recommend different uses, like, things that could be done without construction necessarily. What would you say would be, or the lobby space you mentioned?
So everything is construction, and you'd be surprised at, at how much, you know, it, it takes to do something even internally, or just in interior space. I think what's nice to think about is, you know, again, what Leonard was alluding to about kind of holistically, is understanding where, where's our goal? And how do we kind of phase getting there so that we don't make a decision just for this next bond, or just for, you know, the next step, that then undermines what would come after that, or what would be an ultimate goal? And so, yes, there could be more opportunity for what is now your central connection space between the middle school and high school, but is that always going to be the central connection space between the middle school, high school? If there is an addition that really helps to bridge that in a different way, that becomes your, your hub and your kind of central zone. And kind of, and thinking about what, you know, where we want to get to and, and how to, what the roadmap is to get there is really what we're hoping to do.
I mean, we've, we've discussed internally the, the wayfinding problem. And I, I've kind of seen it, I haven't spent a whole day here, but the middle school, where it's going to the cafeteria, there's a stairwell in the way, which is normally not the base and you typically have a hallway and the stairs peripled to it. So there's a blockage between people using the stair to go somewhere else, and then people waiting to go to cafeteria, right? So inherently, there is a reason why middle schoolers don't have lunch. They, they have it, you know, they don't have time for it, because it takes too long to line up. And if you look at, look at the certain, let's say, your arteries, right, this whole complexes of working organisms, people experiencing their daily lives, there are opportunities, we think, and we'll get into that further, and I don't want to, you know, without太多的 focus on that, that if you can look at the path of movement in a clearer, more concise way, that may literally be part of this additional element. And we, well, we really like the courtyard, because it's completely underutilized. We've kind of mentioned that. But it, it's that space that connects every, every kind of element, every building element. And yet, you know, the potentials of it, I think, are quite great, because right now, the arteries are a little clogged. And, and so how do you deal with getting to these, you know, I know you're so used to seeing or experiencing the building through just, this is the way I use the building. But I think our job is to, to see and unlock maybe a clearer potential without, again, maybe it doesn't really even require an additional, but I think that's the next step.
I was going to ask you about the corridor. So, and you kind of opened with that, right? Like, we're not using it. Do you see some interim way to use it to relieve some of the traffic flow problems?
So, again, we haven't kind of picked anything, you know, picked a pen up to paper, but an opportu, we have had discussions about what if we had a cafeteria and kind of just capitalizing on this central space, right? And what would that look like? And how would that change everything throughout the building? And how would that change really a relationship of, of, you know, the middle school and high school to the surrounding space? And then what happens to kind of the peripheral area around that central cafeteria?
Because right now, the cafeteria, you know, to get the food up there, you have to go to a loading dock and take it up to the fourth floor, right? Which, which I think also contributes to the incitiveness of the loading dock, because there's a lot of food coming in and out, right? This notion of the courtyard and cafeteria, we see cafeteria spaces as not just solely for food.
Yeah.
Right? This is kind of a larger conversation about really a, a gathering space. But, if you kind of envision coming into your high school in that area with the lounge, and having the space on the other side of that, it then opens up not only the cafeteria as a space looking on the slightly tiered lower floor, but it also changes the way you move around the building.
Yeah, right.
That's kind of, we had to say, the heart of your project is really the courtyard. And yet, nothing ever, there's no space that really utilizes that relationship to it. And you can imagine, right, on a beautiful day, you know, we're not saying the entire courtyard is a huge courthouse, but then you can, you know, exit the cafeteria. Like, I grew up in St. Louis High School, and I remember our cafeteria was a gym. And we also could just go outside after lunch and then come back in. The environments were all kind of layered for these events to happen. Because I think that would be, you know, the gym spaces are the gym spaces. You know, the auditoriums were fixed seats. But an identifiable, I think, you know, wonderful space that is the heart of, you know, these things on Hudson would be, I think, pretty cool.
Particularly since this is enclosed, it adds to the safety level that, you know, wouldn't have. We had a smoking lounge in my high school.
You did?
You kidding me?
Yeah.
Outside, that was the, the smoking lounge, yeah.
Goodness.
Where did you go to high school?
That was the 80s in Massachusetts.
We had one inside.
Right, exactly, Phil. You and I-
It was the 70s.
Right.
Thank you very much. You did? I'm shocked.
We had smoking on our, I was at a caf-
Let me, I don't know how many, are there more?
No, I don't have any more questions. Thank you. That was awesome.
Let me pick up a theme from Maureen here. You talked about the heart. I think the head, the brain, the mind, and let's, more on the brain, mind, or, I, my saying is, Hastings has never before done such a comprehensive look at where we might be. And like most institutions, particularly education- And like most institutions, particularly education one, we fix here and then go, oh, my goodness. We fix here and go, oh, my goodness. So now it's, and that's why your theme of questions is great. It's, you've got to be patient a bit, say, what's the whole concept? And you had said it, right, what's sort of the phasing as to where we want to get? And not do the, the quick grabs that made, which we've been doing. We have incredibly talented internal facility construction team that gets so much done very well. Also, though, then are caught doing things that a year or two later, like, well, why do we do that? So we're trying to not get into that. And I think it helps then with a good comprehensive plan, with communication materials with it, help communities see where we currently are and where we need to be. And yes, the building's been wonderful for decades for many, many families. And if we've been here, it still needs attention. But I hate to go full circle, we have to have a smart mind on this, which you're bringing us, kind of a grounded sense of where are we headed?
I was going to say it was an opportune time to do this, right, after having developed Portrait of a Hastings learner kind of alongside and pairing with it as well. Because it's, you know, we do this a lot for institutions, schools, communities. And pairing a strategic plan with a, with a capital improvement plan is really the most powerful way to understand kind of your, your space holistically.
I would say, one, one last thing I would just say is that as we look at whether we need a bond for this or however we're going to fund it, I think it's important, what you said at the very beginning, is this is a ten to fifteen year plan. And I think that to any part of the presentation, to understand like, like, what is the trend in education for the next ten to fifteen years? And why do you think that our new design will, will not immediately, the moment it's built, become obsolete? You know, I think that would be helpful for the community to understand, here are the trends, here's, and here's why our changes will, will become, will still be relevant in ten to fifteen years.
It was part of the questioning with the faculty and kind of where do you see, you know, this going? Where do you see, what are your kind of hopes for, for that to be on the road? Even if you're not going to be here, what do you, what do you see happening?
But even like general trends, like I'm sure Theresa, you're probably aware of this, and Melissa Sizmancy is probably very aware of, like, what are the trends in education, you know, moving forward, so?
That would also be really nice to hear from you, to have that kind of reflected back to us as well. So if you want to send, whatever, I'll give you my card.
So I appreciate that you are not at the, we're not at the phase and shouldn't be of putting pen to paper and...
Well, this is their next phase now, yeah.
But I, I guess I kind of hear you talking a lot about the unused wonderful space we have in the courtyard. And it makes me think about often in a house, you end up doing a renovation around a kitchen, as that being a kind of a central place. And I could, I guess, I get the sense that maybe you're moving towards, maybe we do a cafeteria kind of space there. They could go to the outside, and then we recapture the cafeteria space, which is a lot of space, which is kind of an interesting concept.
At any party, people hang out at the kitchen.
Say that again?
At any party, people hang out in the kitchen.
Anytime people hang.
No matter how much, no matter how much you clean your whole house, everybody's just in the kitchen.
But the advantage of looking at the third floor cafeteria is you are looking at middle school classrooms, right?
Right.
Mm-hmm, right.
But we're even, but we're also deficient in the cafeteria.
The cafeteria doesn't function correctly.
We don't have enough space.
Just the way it's, right, because the stairs, right.
Two-floor cafeteria, yeah.
Right. And Mr. Nguyen tried to fix that last year, and it was still hard.
Just we move that, just get out of the way.
Right. Let's just do it.
Right, totally.
Let's just vote tonight.
Those poor kids who don't eat, don't get a chance to. They're not, they don't eat, totally.
Anyway, interesting thought.
So what are the, are there any implications for the next phase?
So I think Maureen is scheduling a, a next facilities committee meeting. And really, we, you know, need, what do we want to kind of digest as this, as this first level of concept design, right? What are we interested in studying far with that? So that, as well for us, we're working collaboratively, not to kind of work on something that's not going to be aligned with what is digestible for the, the school and the community. And so we're going to really kind of hear from the board and the facilities committee about kind of where, where you those appetites.
Okay, that'll be before the end.
Just for instance, as an example, if you decided that you don't really want four or six classrooms for the future needs of middle school, it's kind of what we would do, right? Because maybe we can find them within the existing building and then do that, right? So in a sense, we, we need the board of us to have a wish list to engage in a design for...
Well, I think, but I think we're, I, I want to say that like beyond the future, I mean, I think currently, with our current use of the building, we're arguably four to six from short of being able to, or like maybe not six, but three, you know, three or two or three that, just in terms of like that middle school population. And we, we've just seen it this year, and that's where this conversation kind of perked back up, was that there were either programming and/or just splitting sections that we were unable to do, at least the way we're currently using the building. I mean, arguably, could the middle school take over some high school space? I mean, there are probably other steps we're working with the schedule to see, like, is it efficient? Are we efficiently using that space? Is could it be something, you know?
I think to help the board out here, you have, you have the facility committee, which has three board members. Plus, you have faculty on it, staff. We've invited additional community members in, so it's, it's a quite inclusive group. Both of those who have had a long history around these issues and are newer to it. Also, a mix of perspectives as to please charge ahead, whoa, please, whoa. So you've got, that's a writing metaphor. So it's, we have that. I have lived this elsewhere. I think we have to be patient with what I, iterative spiral process. And I think the board will agree with me. If you ask the board to give you the answer now, that's not the path. I think the path is to go through the committee structure with the three brought out. I think we go back to at least the faculty who gave input. Because I think building up some of that faculty involvement may then, we'll get there fairly fast, actually. But say, of what this very comprehensive report's telling us, what gets, raises to the top most immediately in a phase to go after what's in the next phase? And then keep coming back to the full board to say, here's what's emerging. Get my spiral idea roof. But you're tying it to smaller group work. Facility committee's excellent, I think, Maureen, we do need to get back to some of the faculty and get that sort of feedback in. But we'll be able to move this along, but then we're much more likely to come up with something that, that's, that's viable.
Yeah, and I mean, I think, you know, for the board, I mean, for, you know, whatever we end up doing here, whatever direction, we do have a number of facilities projects we put on hold for over a year now.
What's the other part of this?
It is, to remember the process, we were in our five-year plan. That does look at programming, not in-depth like this, and, and not, and I think there was at that time, a thinking of doing some, just a very preliminary thinking about adding an addition that would, you know, it was just like spitballing ideas, underutilized locker rooms, space and all the rest. But we start, we said that to say, you know, let's do a full analysis of the building. We go out and spend, design that may be reactive, because we've done that a million times here. And to Joe's team, and this is something people, like, they're not architects, nor are they engineers. Being a car, they follow plans. And occasionally, I've seen it happen here, I've said, Joe, that, you know, we, if, I don't know if you recall, we put $150,000, which we have not touched, because there was this reaction, oh, just put it here. And I'm like, wait, does that fit into the, like, no, we're moving this here, and I'm like, we cannot do this. Part of it was we were able to still function in the space we had, but we still have that money available to us. But the, this kind of reactive way in which we've spent money, undone it, you know, I was here, I mean, I was here for most of the construction in the last thirty years, but downstairs, we had to have everything moved downstairs. Even when you do it internally, it's still costing you a tremendous amount of money. You're still bringing in external folks to do abatements and flooring and all the rest. And you still, even years ago, it could have been four or $500,000 for like a small space runout. Externally, even if we were to renovate a floor, which would require building permits and things to get it through the state, would be millions and millions of dollars. I mean, everything is expensive, so we really want this roadmap. But back to the slow and easy thing, whatever the board decides, this process has to push through the whole summer. Whoever's ever on the facilities committee needs to just say, we will be meeting probably, you know, hopefully at least once a week in summer. Because in order to get even the other projects compiled, no, or, you know, regularly, you don't have to make every meeting. But we can't kick this off any further, because it took us a long time, as they mentioned. We did an RFP, we brought them on, that's, we should have been doing this a year ago.
So what I'm, what I'm saying right now is if, if, if there's not, the board should be saying, please keep moving with pace.
Right, that's my point.
And keep coming back to us.
Yeah.
The board should not be saying now, please go run and do that cafeteria.
The courtyard, yes.
Maybe within a couple months we may do that.
Exactly.
But that's, but then use the facility committee structure, which may not, you know, may not be active. You know, we'll talk as administrators later about how to get, I think, a, a tight group of faculty additionally working on this to bring that energy and refinement, because I think that's going to help focus this down. Plus, the other thing sitting there are, as I mentioned at the beginning, we've got a boiler to think about. We've got an athletic field to think about. We have a growing constituency for that. But if we don't act on that, there's going to be some impatience and wondering what went on.
Right. But even beyond that, we have a tremendous amount of maintenance issues that I'm more concerned about.
But to try and give some structure, we already, also a chance for you to hear the comprehensive preliminary look, get some feedback, I think, through directly here, Maureen and me. The next facility committee meeting, I think, that'll be really sorting out what is now the work plan over the next several months, which will include summer. And then, because that, that's where we are.
I think we need to schedule a number of facility meetings.
Yeah, for the remainder of the year, we have...
About, not tonight, but start thinking about community engagement, not just people...
Well, they've been on, we, you were in here the last...
I'm on the facilities committee, I mean, how we're going to start.
Well, I think we need to get the plan tighter, and I feel like now that...
Yeah, but I think there's a lot that we can agree on soon that we want to start communicating to the community. Because there's already a lot of buzz about...
Yeah. You took the words out.
Really, like, are you really going to do a, you're really doing another bond? You're really doing a new, oh, I heard we're doing all new turf fields, and I said, really? I didn't hear that, right? You know, I mean, I think we have to, it's fine for us and what we know, but we can't be so insulated. Or it's going to completely backfire. I know that.
No, I know, but I, I mean, I, I feel like we're constantly talking about it. I don't think we are, but that being said, there is some urgency around, you know, whatever the board decides. But the thinking, you know, even the last bond was over five years ago. And there were a number of things in which, and I, I mean, forget about this, there are just maintenance items. We know the boiler, we've already talked about, we'll handle that with the capital reserve, which will pretty much deplete that, if not require a higher cost at this point. But even in things of like Joe, we're going at, you know, he just looked the other day, oh, the, the entire, you know, block top now is, it's just wearing. I mean, even just every time we turn around, I feel like there's some, you know, another four to $500,000 maintenance project he's looking at. So there is, you know, I think having this continue and getting this, because this is a multi-year plan. So there, I'm kind of envisioning there may be a, a piece of this that is part of this upcoming bond or isn't. But those other items need to be kind of, we have to be thinking, as we've been saying, that we will need to do a bond vote in the fall.
Yeah. Maureen, I think that I can remember a lot of this kind of conversations. And I, I just, I like to conceptualize things in my head, just to have a better sense. And I know that one of the things that brought this was because we, we knew we needed to get a comprehensive understanding of where we are and what we can do. So there's a maintenance piece. And although some of the maintenance piece is something that can be, can be part of the bigger part, and some maintenance piece that require fixed now. So we wanted to sort of see how that can be separated. So that those ones are like a survival kind of maintenance, is what I'll call it. And then those maintenance that is piece patches that leads to the same problem of not being used or it doesn't really fit the bigger part, like you said, becomes something that is a, is a dead use of money only because it was fitting something else. So with that said, I think what Dr. Marquesi said was like, clearly letting the community understand that these are maintenance items that are being swept under the bigger umbrella of this plan that will go as and when it can continue. And these are things that is fixing. We need a boiler, yeah, we may get a new boiler, but we need this now because she's freezing. So with us, so I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm in agreement with what you're saying. I have three things that I want to summarize in my head, which is, with all of this said, the main points was usability, getting more space and traffic. Is that fair to what you were, with, with, because the overarching theme, usability, more space and traffic? Now, with that said, I think that I want to throw the maintenance with the fills. Like, I sat in a meeting with the, Dr. Marquesi, was it the student union? I can't remember. And, and the student union, and this was not a forced, they were not forced into saying this, but one student, and the rest agreed, because I was looking at their faces. I like to observe people a lot. And it was, this person shared how she managed to do a specific sport only because the person supposed to do it got hurt and was hurt for three weeks because of these holes in the, in the fill, right? So, so there is a maintenance issue with the fills that needs to get fixed. But I, I always say, and I've said this before, that if we just put the turf in front of the maintenance, then people are losing what they need is. Because the, the facility committee can discuss what can be done to solve the problem, not just fixate on turf. And then if that kind of conversation becomes transparent enough that, okay, this is, this is the best fix. This is, you, you, because we fixate on words, turf, 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 and then we are losing the side that kids are getting hurt on a field that has all these trap holes on them.
The only thing I just wanted to mention, we did, prior to even engaging this, look at a lot of different options to fix the field in the facilities committee. And we even brought in external partners that would not necessarily go with artificial turf, but would provide a different type of drainage system, which a lot of it is because the water damage just creates, you know, the, the damage on the field. So by putting an enhanced drainage system, which is pretty much, it probably would be more costly than doing the turf, and that's kind of where, and we get the less usability. And although there's a value to that, but economically, the, an artificial turf field is going to be your less expensive option, as crazy as that may seem. But because of what that would require, and you would not be increasing it. But I think, you know, one, one or the other will have to be recommended as part of this bond. But we did look at alternatives for it, because a lot of it has to do with the drainage below. So it was either getting this drainage system that would definitely improve it without doing the turf or doing a turf with a drainage system. So it, it seemed as though if you put them next to each other, there, there may be more advantages of an artificial. Like, that's, I think, where the group, I don't want to speak for anybody else in the facilities, but that was kind of in the final analysis, this...
The discussion.
The, the discussion. So that, that piece is, I don't want to say settled, but I think we have a, a fair idea of where we're heading with that.
Thank you.
And then that'll have to be grouped in. But as I've, I think we all understand too, there's also money involved, right? So there's only so much, you know, we have to, this will be kind of now moving quickly. We've had this analysis done, they're going to be now going to their next phase. But just in terms of, I just wanted to go with the bond timing, even the public notice on a bond is like ninety days.
Correct.
There's a secret that is required to be done. If you could see my timing, like, we've already, we started this discussion probably close to two years ago, when we started, said we have to plan for another bond. So there's certain things in which we, especially with the boiler, we don't want to run multiple votes, because there's an expense in that. And we wanted to do like a capital reserve and a bond vote in the same night, if possible. That would require a plan to be...
Yeah, I understand.
By September-ish, you know, because, and that would put us into almost a December vote.
So you're saying a vote of December?
Or January, just based on because of their, because of legal requirements on noticing. And a secret that will have to be done, which is an environmental impact, you know, analysis. So we'll start getting financial planners and getting all of those things. And you, you, we have to have a full financial, we have to get a rating, all these things that have to, that are required to be done. That's why I said, like, whoever's on the facilities committee, buckle up, because this is... That's why I said, like, whoever's on the facilities committee, buckle up, because this is, you know, and, and, and we use the facilities committee, but we'll make a recommendation out of things on there, but there's a certain amount of work that has to be done.
Wait, wait, our new committee's hurting.
It's the next agenda item.
This was a long time in the making, so I think we're kind of moving slightly forward with putting together a package, and then what, what comes of what we're going to do here is kind of, once, I, I think we have to make some decisions in the short term, and, and what will be a part of this, or not be part of it. That's how I kind of.
So, just to.
Sorry.
No, you go, you know, you go.
I was just going to suggest that as well, that in going to the public, having the roadmap that, that we build consensus on first, I think will be important, because otherwise it's really presenting everyone with a problem without any sort of roadmap.
Right.
So I think that's really the next step, as, as Dr. Machesi was alluding to, is really working together to kind of build some consensus on, on what, what that roadmap for, for these needs will be. Right? And once we have that collaboratively identified, which are the needs that we're tackling next, then at least we can speak to kind of what may be part of this bond, even if we don't have what that looks like yet, at least we kind of know the, the range of scope that we're looking at as well.
So, um, I did ask all of this because I wanted to land on an understanding. So it's just two things, the maintenance piece that is dire, without it being swept under, and then these three major arching goals, we, the board, need to, and those coming, and I'm out of here, but those coming, need to determine which one is a priority. Is it the, is it the traffic? Is it this, the more space, or is it the usability? Because once these three, which I wanted to confirm was the overarching theme, is, is decided upon, then now creating the roadmap is where we'll say that, well, in terms of more space, this is, whether, is it, is the cafeteria in the middle here, or whatever we are thinking about is a priority, so therefore, it's more space, is this roadmap, which would then lead to usability, which would then lead to traffic. I think that, that, that kind of decision, which would come from those that are using it, is what needs to be established first. Once that gets established, then we all know which path we are following on this 10-year plan. But right now, it looks like, this is a great idea, that is a great idea, no, this is not a great idea, and that may just be discarded. And then my final thing is a very logically nerdy question. Have you heard of the slime mold? It's not actually a mold, it's, it's a amoeba, but the serum, they, they tug off, some people call it phycerial. You know how it determines traffic, like, it just creates, um, what do you call it? They make a model of it and leave it, and it tells.
Is it like a Roomba, like a slime Roomba?
Yeah.
Definitely one of those.
It actually will, like, tell you where the traffic will look like. This, this animal is able to just create it for you without you doing it, in that thing and cover it, and it's pretty cool, and it's something fun.
All right, uh.
I'll, I'll text it to you guys.
Could I just ask one question of Maureen?
Yes.
All the, all the.
We should print a 3D model of the building.
Exactly, the 3D model, and just to drop it in there, and to show you where you should.
That sounds good. Um, if I could ask, if Maureen, you have like, a whole bunch of like, guidelines, timelines, the 90-day window, and this is, like, do you have that written somewhere, so that we could kind of back into, like, what the schedule needs to look like for decision-making on various things?
Sure, yeah.
That'd be great, yeah.
No, and that's why I think as we've kicked, you know, things, there are certain things that, you know, similar to the boiler, when we talked about it, because of ti, also timing on vote, timing on approvals from the state, when we would anticipate needing that boiler, it has to be manufactured. So there, there's the, the legal timelines of voting, and then there's timelines when you're trying to line up, when you could actually get the work done, right? So that, that there's, those are kind of both in play, I would say, here, so I can certainly provide that to you. That's why I wanted, you know, to, I think we now are underway in this full process, and now we kind of go back to the things that we spoke about before, and start really lining up things. Um, because to Bill's point, those things still are out there, and, you know, maybe it's a multi-year process, we say, well, we'll do this for now, and then we'll kick some of those other things for the fall. I'm just, you know, but I think there are, there is some urgency, and I'm not saying on everything, I'm not, it, it may only be like a few very important items, but we need to kind of get, make sure that we're moving those forward too.
Okay, all right. I'm sure there are more questions, but is it it for tonight, as we have to move on? But Rena and Leonard, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And look forward to the next steps, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Kai, thank you for being so patient.
Of course, my pleasure. It was a very interesting presentation.
And thank you for contributing as well, yeah. Uh, there we go. So, we're going to move on. Kai, if you're ready, you're going to be next up for the student report, so that you.
Perfect. All right, um, I'm going to speed through this a little bit, but there have been a lot of very exciting things happening in the last two weeks. So, starting off with the obvious, Eliana is not here, that is because prom was last night. So, I've heard so many great things from so many half-asleep people, and I'm super excited for all of the pictures to come out, the official ones. It was a while ago now, but on Friday the 17th, all of the high school students and our principal had a surprise, which was a half-day and ice cream party to celebrate Mr. A.'s retirement. It was really wonderful, couple of people, some in attendance, made some really wonderful speeches. As I am well too aware of, we have just come to the close of our extra-long Memorial Day weekend. Um, I know lots of people who went places that were like fun and exotic. I went to upstate New York for a counselor training, um, but I caught up on lots of schoolwork, as I know many others did, so productive, but also relaxing. I'm in support. Um, over the weekend, I was, however, unfortunately, checking my phone all of the time, which is just one more testament to our amazing peer leadership program. They sent out the letters this weekend, this Saturday, and I'm in. So, huge shout-out and thank you to Mr. Conwys, Ms. Mokler, Mr. Hunt, and all of last year's PLs, I'm very excited. Um, in other good news, we sent off two seniors to the National Science and Engineering Fair, ISF, and both of them placed. So this is a massive accomplishment. I, if I'm not mistaken, it's the first time in Hastings' history that this has happened. It's so rare to send students to ISF, much less have both of them place. So, huge congrats to Justin Baldassari, who was second in his category, and Miles Hamilton, who was fourth in his. Continuing on our award-winning streak, there were six 6th graders who placed at the American Debate League Tri-State Championship in Queens. Really big congrats to them and the rest of the debate team, which is headed by Ms. Cruz. And one more celebratory piece, which is that our academic challenge team sent four students to Atlanta, where they competed for the national competition. So huge props to Owen Linder, Hazen Dupree Sullivan, Jacob Goman Wetzler, and Benny Feldman, who won Hastings 21st out of over 300 schools nationwide. So this is amazing.
Yeah.
Um, as elections are coming up, Eliana and I visited all of the sophomore English classes last week, so we took five minutes to just explain about the position as the board liaison, and what opportunities it brings up. We've already gotten in some applications, so I'm very excited for this process to continue. Some upcoming events, we have on Friday, the 7th, there's Hastings Pride, the GSA Club is holding a booth, booth there, um, they're giving out stickers, and they're answering questions about all sorts of, um, identities, and what the flags indicate, et cetera. The day right after that, Saturday the 8th, is the Jazz Picnic, which is always super, super fun. It features performances from the jazz band and many other groups, so it's going to be great and very musical. And lastly, Saturday the 15th is Curtains Up, which is a fundraiser for the Hastings Theater Program. It's going to feature performances by members of our community, some who are students and some who are adults. Um, on the poster, I actually saw Mr. Win's name among performers, so we will see how that goes. And I happen to know that Eliana has a tap dancing number, so if either of those sound entertaining, please stop by, in addition to so many other amazing acts.
That's great.
And that's what I got.
And I think at, at the Pride event, the chorus sings.
Oh, yes, I think so too. Mm-hmm.
That's great, that's great. By the way, who won Assassin? Do we know?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so this is, from what I'm aware, there hasn't actually been a winner. Because it's, this happened last year too, which is that the seniors left before it was completed. We got down to the final four or something. Um, I can check the Instagram, but I'm not positive that, if there was actually a winner.
Oh, my gosh.
Eliana got pretty high up, she was in the final five, but, yeah.
It's gonna be like the Korean War to stay open.
Right, they might have to change the rules next year.
Yeah, my class is, we're going to start it in April, we're.
Right, exactly.
Thank you, thank you very much. And you're free to leave, you had a, you know, it's a busy weekend. Congratulations again, the P.O. Uh, moving on to report from superintendent, it's in public content, um, board docs, is there anything you wanted to pull out of here, or?
Um, I, I think it's all clear emphasized, a couple things in here that had been in a previous memo to you as the board, but now are out in the public sphere. So, some of the things that Kai had so well spoken to are here, but I think you can look at it, links to Hastings' happenings. Um, but if you see a certain rhythm, there, there are things you hear first, and then for the entire community, the board, I'll surface those. Some of it may be repetitive to you, but, but not to the community, it's brandy for that.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to administrative reports from Dr. Sizamansky, I saw just a little note in there, so.
Just a little note, my recent efforts have focused on hiring and of your evaluations, both of which are personnel matters, so I will not elaborate on them, but we've been very busy in both of those areas, and all as well.
Oh, that's a good, we like that.
Actually, let me underscore something that Kai said, that you may have picked up. The, the way we come up with the liaisons is that there's a process and a system to it, it's very much student-centered, student-based. Uh, there is a review by Mr. A., and Mr. Lopez is very accurate, well, so that, you may have understood it, but she was, Kai was speaking quickly. So, Eliana and Kai are going out to all the junior, sophomore classes, because the open seat is the junior seat. Kai moves into the senior seat, and then there'll be a new person to come into the, into the junior seat. So that, that's what Kai was speaking to at that point.
That makes sense. 10th graders.
But the board has no, just, so the public knows, the board itself plays no role either in vetting.
Nor does the superintendent.
Interviewing, or anything like that, purely like the students who are actively in that role, and personnel in the high school itself, but we wait until they show up.
Yeah, there is an application, there is an application, there is a review process, there is a vetting process by Mr. A. and Mr. Lopez, but that allows it to be really a student voice perspective, and, uh, it's, you know, at least while I've been here, I can't speak to before, but it's, it's worked well. And then I'll continue to do coaching facilitation of whomever is joining Kai as, as that other, other representative.
Yeah, I remember when we joined, we spoke, I mean, we, we raised a concern that we want to make sure that it's not just some buddies that are being picked to sit in the seat, so that they're not just buddies or gronies being picked to, to, to sit on the seat, but there is some, so as much as a student, it, we wanted to see how fair it is in the selection, and there were a lot of, um, like, a lot of suggests, I don't remember the details, but it was very early when we joined the board, and it was good. I mean, I know during was, and it was good, so I, so far as I'm concerned, the process is a fair process, I just wanted to say that out loud.
Good point, good point. Moving on to report from Maureen Carballo, business official. Yeah, you covered Canada, right? Okay, thank you, thank you. We're going to public comment, in case anybody would like to comment, that's okay, we're good with that. Uh, business items, are there any questions or comments regarding business items 1 through 18?
I did.
Sure.
I, I just want to say, I think it's exciting that Gordon Corman's coming here. I wish I could go, I read that, one of the books with my.
I'm sorry, that was coming here?
Gordon Cor- Corman?
Author.
The author, yeah. I read one of the books with my son, and it was, uh, it was very good. And then I had a question about one of the others, I just have to look it up.
So you're saying 1 through 18, not 1 through 20?
Oh, I counted 18, do we have more than?
20.
Oh, there's some, I'm sorry, I looked at the number of documents attached.
Oh, I know.
Right, 1 through 20.
Well, number 15, I wasn't really understanding what the side letter of agreement was, um, because it's about remote, they're, they're allowed to teach remotely? I wasn't understanding.
No, HA, that's our administrator's unit, it applies only to the summer from July 1, um, I'm sorry, yeah, summer months, it's allowing administrators to have up to three days they would work remotely in the summer, they have to ask permission for those.
Oh, got it, okay, thanks.
And they can't be tied to an existing, uh, holiday.
Understood.
It's only for this.
It's only for this year.
It's only for this, and it's just for the summer.
It's a contractual issue, so it does have to have a side agreement.
Got it.
This does align with what is going on in the other neighboring districts for their administrators.
Yeah, it makes sense. I, I didn't understand.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good question.
Along the lines of maintenance, I was happy to see that the sidewalks are being done along Farragut for near Burke, and then also at Hillside, because as we know, everything is like the maintenance of things. I mean, even when we talk about the broader bond, which is obviously outside the regular operating budget, it's just the, the for posterity sake, you know, everything that happens is, you know, we may be thinking right now in 15-year terms, but it's by the time everyone at this table and any kids associated with us are long gone, because we want, you know, and it's, it's those things, it's how much money we have to plunk down just to keep things running on a day-in, a day-out basis. So as mundane as they are, when you don't have good sidewalks, people can't get to school, so.
And there's a number of other sidewalks beyond the ones you're surprised, that we've identified as kind of like next phase, so some of these, just back to the bomb, would have been included. So we have a large amount of sidewalks, but because of, I mean, we, when people trip and, yeah, we do get sued, you know, or we can get sued if someone hurts themselves, as they're allowed to, and it does happen. As sidewalks deteriorate further, there's times where Joe said, this can no longer wait, like, we have to do something. On Farragut, it, interestingly enough, we were out there with this historical society, and they were, and that's when we really started to notice in certain areas, um, because we're not out there, Joe and I, I mean, obviously, he's all over the facility, but it's not an area where it's as evident to us, we're not over there all the time, so I think coming back after the winter, we were both kind of, and even the, the village folks were with us, and they were like, oh, this is in horrible condition, so it coincided, they're putting some of the, um, the historical societies, planning to put the new signage up there. So, we were like, wow, we're even going to be doing more people on these sidewalks, so then, it sort of was nice, we would have preferred to do an actual sidewalk, but it was just too expensive, it would have been over, double. So we just are doing the block top, but.
I mean, that's the thing, it points to how prohibitive the costs is, are, just for the maintenance, just to keep them safe. These are not luxuries, so for, when we're thinking about all these things, you know, I think that the way that they're construed, and that's why obviously why the presentation before, being as comprehensive and as detailed as it was, is, is very illustrative, what we're trying to do, not on a, not in, in effort to be luxurious, but rather to be, you know.
Meet the needs.
Standard, and like, yeah, exactly.
We've just, we've done no capital, and I'm trying to think, I'm, now, I don't want to miss, miss seek, but except for like, say, the gyms and some of the athletic facilities in, uh, some door coverings, we haven't done a renovation project in this building since I've been here. We've done win, like, some windows and some repointing.
Middle school auditorium.
No, no, that one, but I, I'm thinking, I'm sorry, classroom spaces, thank you for correcting, the, both the auditoriums, yes, and the common areas, but the classrooms themselves have not been touched. Yes, that's, because we did the high school auditorium run out and all the rest, but I mean, not that that, that was fine, but they have served, th, this room has been here for over 30-something years, I don't even know when it was done.
Maureen, the sidewalks, is it done by?
I heard nineteen ninety-one.
We have to, but we have a bid vendor for that, so each year, we bid out all the disciplines, and the person who is doing the work is the person who won the bid, so...
Okay, and, and do you decide, like, material and use just for, so, you know how they keep making roads and they keep having potholes every year, and then it has to get fixed? Do you, do you determine, I, I, in terms of what materials they are using, so that we don't have to keep repairing it?
Yeah, I mean, we typically, what Joe will do, we get a price in different, like I said, there's cement, and there's different, like block topping and all the rest, I will say that... Very reliable, I think there are times where we have gotten work, like last year, we, another person had won the bid, and actually, we made them, we didn't pay them, and we had it ripped out, because the curbing, they didn't do correctly, and we were having some of the issues. Some of it, I think, is in the install, not a, you know, especially masonry work, it's really important for it to be done well, beyond even, I think cement, cement, how it's poured, you know, the conditions it's poured in, that, you know, how it's mixed and all the rest, there is a real art to it, and I think when it's not done correctly, that's when it cracks more so, so...
I have a, sorry, I, I just wanted to, my last question was, this is just a technical question, the quad thing, do we do it every year?
Yes, we do, yes. That's just the agreement that, yes, we have to enter into each year.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments, business items one through twenty? No? Is there a motion to approve business items one through twenty?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving to placement services for CSC and CPSC, are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve our placement services for CSC and CPSC?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Personnel, as a consent agenda, are there any question comments regarding our appointments, amendments, resignations, or leaves of absence?
I might, even though you're about to vote, I might make a general comment, I think one will wait for me, on item fourteen, Kevin Ruffler coming in, if you approve that as a new chemistry teacher. Excellent work by Melissa Shandroff to encourage Kevin to pursue, I don't want to set the bar too high, but we are very excited about Kevin, and there was a lot of work done to land him. He's an example of someone early in his career where just immense skill, immense talent, immense energy, immense drive, not dissimilar to a certain physics teacher that's really getting great rave reviews here in, in the district, and, so, who was willing last night to also be a chaperone at the, at the prom, and certain chaperones go in their own cars, or on the buses, he even rode the bus.
Wow.
But, again, Melissa Shandroff, just hats off, and I hope the board will celebrate such a great department chair, who went above and beyond to help Kevin understand that this is the place to be.
That's great, excellent, yeah. Is there a motion to approve our personnel consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to minutes, these would be from April sixteenth, is it that long ago? Oh, no, I'm sorry, May seventh, there we are, is that right? Yeah, May seventh.
We have to make an amendment to this.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Okay, okay, gotcha, gotcha. There, okay, gotcha. Is there a motion to approve our minutes from May seventh?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Committee reports, facilities, we basically had it, that was the same report that we received, so not much of an update there. Policy, I saw there's some first reads up here, anybody want to just give us a tiny overview of what this is?
Let's see, I think this one was just some minor edits to, like, to describe related services versus, I'm trying to remember, it was just like minor edits that the attorney suggested. The next one, Bill, was the one that has more significant changes, and we're gonna have Tespa and Laura join us to walk through it, I believe.
That, yeah, that was not before the board yet, so the four-three-two-one, that's the special, right, Melissa?
Yeah, four-two-one.
Yeah, four-three-two-one, that is one that, Laura, the policy committee saw it, asked it to get reviewed by the special administrators, which they then did do, so that's what you see here now, four-three-two-one, there's some related specialized policies that you're referring to, Maureen, that, that are getting additional review, and will be before the board for a first read on June eleventh, but they're all connected. So with this one, the board, the committee looked at thoroughly with Laura and Tespa from a substantive administrative standpoint.
Okay, and these are just first reads, so we're, we're not voting on them, so, are there any questions or comments about them, just in case? No? Okay. Moving on to new business, this is the Western Department School Board Association Committee nominating slate, so what do we do with this? Like, are we voting on it, or...
Yeah, we vote with the...
Annual budget.
We do this every year.
Okay, I remember from the list of officers.
This is different from NISBA, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
We did the NISBA one last time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Are there any questions or comments regarding the, the WISBA, or how to say?
WPSB.
It's not pronounced...
Totally not WISBA.
There's, there's... There's no acronym.
No, there's not really, this one doesn't crack like that.
Sir President, you and I gotta get this right, we're having a dinner with that money.
That's true, we have time to...
Oh, my God.
Any questions or comments? No? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the ratification of the twenty-four, twenty-five Western Department School Board Association budget?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And you may be aware, they've invited Kai and Eliana to speak at their...
Oh, right, they're, yeah.
They had watched tape.
Oh, right. That's awesome.
They could be examples of student liaison work on board.
Should be nice, yeah. The second part of this is slate of twenty-four, twenty-five officers, is there a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five officers and members of the board directors from the Western Department School Board Association?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, moving on. To agenda review, so we're gonna be into June eleventh, is that correct?
The last week?
Yeah.
So, a couple things, no, different location, we'll be up at Hillside, we will open at five o'clock with a reception for both tenement, putting those together, we'll roll right in, condition, both the tenured retirees, and we had load on that meeting, there is the adoption of the code of conduct, that... June twenty-fifth meeting, to really allow you as a board to focus on the tenure and retirees. And, and please...
So five PM at Hillside on the eleven?
Yeah.
And the cafeteria, the...
Right.
Okay. Could be cookies?
There will be, there will be.
You bring them.
And bake it.
We will have treats.
Okay, treats, as a class, I like that.
Treats, that sounds very big. I know.
We will have a cake.
All right, there you go, that's what I wanted to hear.
Maureen.
All right. Moving on to, any board of education comments?
I have some comments.
Yes.
So, I wanted to, I'm both thinking about the election that we just had, I first wanted to give a shout out to Maureen for all of your hard work with the budget, and I think we did a really good job. I think the budget passed by a large margin, and I think that speaks volumes, and I think it's great. At the same time, I want to say, I've been upset about some of the things that I've heard about the election with regard to board trustees, and it makes me very sad that I've heard a lot of things that have happened, lots of screenshots, Facebook, that I think, to me, so are not how I like to think of Hastings, about candidates, about people running, and I've heard stories about children of candidates being, I would call it bullied, comments being said to them by other students, comments about their parents, and I've heard a number of different kinds of stories, I'm sure others here have heard their own versions of this, and it just makes me feel very sad, because I, it is not the kind of village that I like to think of as Hastings, and I say it because it reminded me of an election many years ago, I know Patrick, Maureen probably recall, that was a very divisive election in the village, and really left deep scars, deep wounds that I think are still felt, and it was really not a, a nice, it was not nice, and it was reminiscent of that, and I feel like, you know, we can talk the talk, but do we walk the walk, what we want, how the kind, the way we want our children to be, the, what we want to teach them, and it just made me feel very sad, and I felt like it was important to say something about it publicly. Also, just wanted to say that I will miss Doreen and Damaris on the board, I was thinking tonight, like, who's gonna ask all the questions?
You gotta hold a comment.
Exactly.
Contributed an enormous...
It certainly won't be as fun, I'm sure, Joe.
You contribute an enormous amount, and your, your presence and your spirits will be deeply missed. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. It's very, very kind, and a very kind thought, you know, has a lot of gravitas from you, so I appreciate that, thank you. Any other board comments?
I just want to appreciate everyone here, it's, it's been an incredible experience, incredible journey, every space is very different, even if you occupy it in different ways, at different places, but I, I just want the community to really know that, I know we have the cliched thankless job, but I just want to say that the board, I'm not gonna talk about me, but, but my colleagues here, we have our own heads on our neck, but we all are focused on all students, and if, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, but when we know that a voice has been brought to the table, we are all aware of that voice, it's not because one person is bringing, it's their mindset, our conversations have been about bringing all voices into the space for deliberation, and so, if Doreen had not mentioned what she had mentioned, I would have mentioned it, but once she mentions it, that's all there is to it, no one needs to echo it again, because the work here is to serve all children, all kids, and, and it's a way for us to do it in a way that is serving everybody, and so, I, I'm echoing what my colleague here said, that the, the board meetings are our time, and we are here to talk through things, and everybody's personality is different, I am a talker, just like my friend Maureen is, so we are...
You are?
...attaching to, that's the worst part, but, which is true, I mean, I can't, I'm not able to separate my craziness with my craziness, but I... This board is that all of us know who each other is in terms of what they bring, I've always said, to my friends, I'm saying that publicly, so I'm gonna talk about each of you, I, I know that we need that, very practical, always looking for what is the practical solution, everyone is solution-oriented, my dear friend Theresa is sensing, that's how I feel, I may, I may be wrong, but I know you sense everything that is happening, and when someone is saying this, you are sensing the other part, so although you also look at the other side of the coin, you are all about sensing, and it wasn't also fair that you got attacked with this whole, someone brings Jew, someone brings Palestinian, and then it's another, I'm just echoing what my colleague is saying, that attacking us is not helpful, you know, nobody wants a Hastings like that, you know, that you, you think you will be attacked because you are trying to do a work, and I personally, I'm not saying that when you think of something, you should voice it out, I'm the, I'm the first person that, I don't filter, when I think something, I'm pretend I've not seen it, and when I'm wrong, I'm wrong, I apologize, let's move forward, I didn't realize I was wrong, so now I know I'm wrong, so let's move forward, so we are doing a work that we need to bring everything to the table, and we, and the community asks for transparency, that is the most painful part, the three of us wrote on the ticket of what? Transparency, and so we want to bring everything publicly and discuss it publicly, instead of the way that, I'm not saying Hastings, we are doing that now, but some boards that are dysfunctional will discuss in, in, in the side, what, what word?
Sidebar.
Sidebar, thank you, my dear, we would do the sidebar discussions and come here and say, "Yeah, yeah, nee, nee, yeah, yeah, nee, nee," and, and you don't know how it happened because we've sidebar'd. Look at someone coming in with a comment, and although our structure has said that we would, we would receive it, because of the transparency, most of the time, we respond to it, because we don't want you to feel frustrated, of course, we are not gonna go back and forth if it's getting crazy, so I just want you to know that every, Sylvia doesn't say, when she drops the bomb, she drops it, you, you, you know, I mean, that's her, that's her style, you know, and Alex is trying to keep me on track, and I'm always fighting him right back, so it's, it's like we, we really do this work with love, and of course, Jody, I'm gonna miss you so much, but Jody has, I know, she has that, I, I'm, I'm sorry to use this term, but motherly, if you don't mind, but this whole motherly touch and consideration of everything, and with experience, thirteen-plus years, right, on the board, or more?
Something like that.
Something like, you know, it's just like, she's such a great bouncer of resources, so I'm just hoping that past all this, and not, and this is, we all love Hastings, I call Hastings the big family, that sometimes we get dysfunctional in sentences, but thank you all so much, it was a pleasure serving alongside all of you, so thank you, and, and the leadership team as well, thank you.
You have two more meetings.
Yeah.
I hope you're not, like, you're, like, telling us you're not making another two meetings, I don't know what she's saying.
There's cake, it's the next...
Right, yes.
It's a cake.
This, I know, but, it'll probably jolly inside out. I agree, I, I think, thanks, you know, Jody, for, I think that the only way to do work on the board is questions, if you don't ask questions, then you're not moving anything forward, and you're just accepting what status quo is, and not trying to understand the deeper meaning in things, and how to make sure that we are representing our children and moving things forward, and my fear, when there is all this bullying, that fewer people will want to run for the board, and fewer people will want to speak up when they're on the board, and that's, that's just a shame for our district.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? None? Is there a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Oh, waiting for that second board comment?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, did I, oh, I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, I skipped over that.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, but, you know, since the topic...
Oh, of course.
Yeah.
I don't have a lot to say, but I, I think, I, I think it just isn't with any group, and here, we're talking about Hastings, there, there, there are loud voices, and there are quiet voices, and I, and I, I think that, that, you know, sometimes I'm a loud voice, and sometimes a quiet voice, but I think that a lot of people appreciate what you all do, and, and see the kindness, even just in the time that you guys are given, but also individually, and the kindness that we have seen, and so, anyway, we appreciate, I appreciate that, I'm not speaking for anybody else.
Thank you, that's very kind of you, thank you, thank you. No, I'm sorry, I skipped it up. Down to nineteen, down to eighteen, so is there a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.